Do you need to do a service call? Actually, we already sold the house.
All right, everybody. Welcome to the Derry Cooperative School Board meeting, Tuesday, October 27th. Will you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, we have most of the board present in person. We may have Michelle joining us via Zoom. If not presently, then shortly. We have the minutes from October 13th. If I have a motion to approve those. Motion by Nick. Second by Jessica. Any changes, omissions?
Are we just talking about public or public and non-public?
Both, public and non-public.
So I abstain from the non-public because I was not at that meeting.
Okay. So all those in favor? I?
Aye.
Opposed? We have one abstention. And Mr. Farley with your Pinkerton update, please.
So Pinkerton has been fully remote for the last two weeks after a handful of positive COVID cases on campus. Most of them were remote students who weren't following the guidelines and then spreading it to the in-school community. That culminated in someone who was told to quarantine after a close family member tested positive coming to campus for SAT day. And that was the day when the email was sent around and the Pinkerton community went fully remote. Another person did test positive on Sunday, but there was minimal exposure because it was after after school had gone fully remote. They were last on campus on that last day in school. But Dr. Powers said he would issue a statement by the end of the month regarding November and whether we would be whether we would continue with fully remote or go back to the hybrid learning. And lastly, on a lighter note, Ms. Sturtevant, one of our science teachers, was one of the seven finalists for the New Hampshire Teacher of the Year Award. And that will be announced shortly.
Excellent. Any questions for Pinkerton?
Congratulations to her. That's a wonderful achievement. So we read about that in your, I think it was your Friday update. It was an uplifting Friday update with that news.
Thank you, sir. Nice update. Hopefully, the folks in the schools and in the town will learn from this lesson and heed to a better sense of judgment. Whether you believe about what's going on or not, I think the idea is to keep our kids in the schools as long as we possibly can. And let's keep that in mind and nothing else, right? Thank you. All right, considerations for transitioning between school instructional model update.
Okay, good evening. So speaking along those lines, tonight I'm going to do a presentation in conjunction with Susan Linehan, South Range Elementary School Nurse and our Nurse Team Leader for the District. I know all of you know Susan very well. And Dr. Chris Peterson, our District Consulting Physician, who is a pediatrician in Lunenary. Both of them work very closely with our school district, with myself and with members of our district team, district leadership team, our pandemic response team, and our district community task force. So in alignment really with what you said, Derek, I couldn't stress it more that I think certainly our parents are really stepping up in terms of our daily symptom sheet and really checking students for symptoms before they get in the car or board the bus or walk to school. So we thank our parents, thank our families, thank our guardians for doing the right thing. We know that we really take a proactive and restrictive stance in the Derry Cooperative School District. And we're proud of that and we're proud of our results. So I understand that many of you have seen some of this presentation before. This is done to review, again, to be transparent and then really to go a step further tonight. Susan and Chris will give part of the presentation tonight with me. And then we'll be here for any questions that you may have as a result of the presentation or any further questions that you may have that are in detail. The first slide that I have is the Derry Cooperative School District Pandemic Response Team. And really, part of our pandemic response team's responsibility is a daily review of the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services COVID-19 dashboard. That is also part of our Derry Cooperative School District website. And so we review the data from that dashboard. And I'll give you an example. Yesterday, we went into the, or actually, Sunday, the substantial category. Today, we were back to moderate and then by 5:00 PM, we're back to substantial. And so I know Chris will address that later. We review the data from that dashboard on a daily basis. And more than one person does that from our pandemic response team. That's important, always to have more than one person review that data. We review it both electronically and we also review it in paper copies. So again, it's important to have more than one eye on that data. Members of our Task Force Healthcare Professional Members advise us, advise our leadership team on potential needs to shift instructional models. As you're well aware, as other relevant information becomes available, healthcare members of the Derry Community Health Leaders Task Force advise our superintendent's leadership team of the need to move to either a more or less restrictive instructional model. As you know from our reopening plan, our instructional models are labeled Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C, onsite, or hybrid, or are fully remote. And I will define those later on. And our pandemic team at that point convenes to review data and the associated recommendations. So based on the recommendations of the Derry Community Leaders Task Force, then the district's pandemic response team meets and says, okay, what are the recommendations? And then we will look at the data, we will look at the associated recommendations. And then we decide to move instructional models based on that data and associated recommendations. Again, Plan A is a completely reopen onsite, Plan B is hybrid, which is limited capacity, and Plan C is completely remote. In saying completely remote, just as a review, in a completely remote model, building access is highly restricted and small groups or individual students may need to receive specialized instruction onsite in schools as permissible by health and safety guidelines. Guidance for decision-making. How do we make our informed decisions? So we use information from Task Force Healthcare Members, which I have already reviewed. We really rely on that information. And at first, we didn't have to really collaborate as much. We collaborated on maybe a weekly basis. Now, I have to tell you, we basically collaborate every day. Sometimes six or seven days a week. And that is really in the best interest of our students and families and our general and overall community. We also use the New Hampshire DHHS document, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services document, called Considerations for Transitioning Between School Instructional Models Based on Level of Community COVID-19 and Impact on Local Schools. I sent this out at the beginning of the year. And what that provides is a decision matrix for transitioning between methods of instruction. So what that does is that provides a guide. And it's really important, and I said that in the beginning of the statement that went out with this guide from the New Hampshire DHHS, is that provides a guide and we can move in and out of that and that can be changed as time goes on. We learn more about COVID-19 every day. We know that. On a scientific basis, we learn more, sometimes every hour. So things can be changed. And the important word here is a guide. So we use many multiple points of data as a guide based on our information. And I think the important part for us in Derry is that we're very collaborative, we're very fluid in our model, and we listen. We listen, we're reflective, and we react. Yet, I think the biggest thing in our reaction is we don't overreact. And I think that's a very poignant point to remember throughout this presentation. So what I did tonight was label them in Phase 1. You've seen this slide before, so I won't overdo it. So Phase 1 is reviewing the level of community transmission. And this is part of what I had sent out earlier in the year. And in reviewing the level of community transmission, that is determining the level of COVID-19 community transmission. And in this determining the level of COVID-19 community transmission, New Hampshire DPHS proposes three different criteria outlined in the next table that I'll show you for determining the county COVID-19 transmission level. And you hear about that a lot. So you hear us going from moderate to substantial, back to moderate, based on yesterday's results, back to today's substantial. And I will show you that table and show you kind of how we deliberate and determine the levels. And schools, if you notice the last sentence there, "School districts should utilize the appropriate county-city level data in which their schools primarily reside for the following criteria." And that's really what I want to move to at this point. The criteria. So let me show you the level of community transmission, which is minimal, moderate, and substantial. And I know you're all really familiar with those words. And the criteria on the left, which I know I've reviewed before. The criteria on the left, COVID-19 PCR test positivity is a seven-day average. That's the only place you'll see right on this criteria is a seven-day average. And minimal is obviously less than 5%. The number of new infections per 100,000 population over the prior 14 days. The next two criteria will show the prior 14 days. The first criteria that you saw is a seven-day average. So you have the 7, 14, and 14. And then the number of new hospitalizations per 100,000 people over the prior 14 days. So you have less than 5%, less than 50, and less than 10. As you know, the one we're watching closest, because this is the one that's fluctuating and rising at a more rapid rate, is the middle one, the number of new infections per 100,000 population over the prior 14 days. And I know Chris Peterson, Dr. Peterson, will address this as we go on. So the others were definitely under the 5% and were definitely under the number of new hospitalizations. A couple of times a week, we have our Director of Emergency Medical Services in our town. Chuck Emian sends us the most up-to-date data, not only obviously from Rockingham County, but more importantly, that are specific to Derry. So in doing this, in really examining our data, we have a multiplicity of data that we examine. We have Rockingham County data, we have our school data, we have the data from Derry. So we have a number of, we'll call it triangulating data, we have a number of data points that we examine, not only those of Rockingham County, but specific to our schools and our pre-K through 8, and specific to Derry. Phase 2, reviewing the impact on schools. So what is the impact of schools? And I label this as Phase 2 instead of Step 2. So it's determining the level of COVID-19 school impact, and this is defined at our educational facility level. Susan Linehan is going to review this at our own Derry Cooperative School District level in a minute. So the purpose of this is really to determine the school-specific COVID-19 impact level. And I'll show you the criteria on the subsequent slide. And so what we say here is, what level of school impact should be assigned based on the highest level identified by any one of the following criteria? So let me move to the criteria. And you've seen this before. This slide's just in a different color than what you saw before. It's really the only difference. On the level of school impact, it's low, medium, and high. And then the criteria, transmission within the school facility, and I know some of you have seen letters, others of you haven't. We always talk about transmission in the letters. Well, very often, we refer to transmission in the letters that go out about if there's a school-specific COVID case. And then we talk about student absenteeism. Less than 15% is low impact. And Susan will talk about those statistics specifically related to our district absenteeism. And then staff capacity. What is staff capacity? Is it normal, strained, or critical? That's really a, that's very, very much of a subjective observation, right? Because what we look at and say, has our staff capacity to conduct classes and school operations, is it at a normal capacity or is it strained? During the cold and flu season, last year, the year before, it was strained. That's really no different than this year. The difference between last year and this year lies in a couple of things. The difference lies in we have less substitutes. The difference lies in the fact that we can't combine classes. So there's not a difference really in the fact that we may be in the medium category because we're strained with staff capacity. The difference is how can we react to the strain level? So at this point, before Susan speaks, I am going to put out another plea to the community that if you can substitute in any way, shape, or form to help us, we'd really appreciate the help. And we need your help. We need quality help. And then we would most appreciate any help from the community that we can get for substitutes. Because our intention is to stay in Plan A for as long as it is possible to keep students and staff safe and healthy in the capacity that we can at this time. So, and is it critical now? Nope. Will someday it maybe come to the critical point? Absolutely. But right now, it is not critical. In some days, we think it might be critical. And then we're all going to have to, you know, pitch in and say, here we are. And at this point, at some days, we've been called and say, okay, these are the plans that we're going to have to shift to. Transition to this plan to cover. And that is really because of the combination of classes that we cannot combine them. So it really is in the difference that this year lies to oppose to last year. But we do ask for your help in the community. If you can spare even one day a week, you can sign up at the superintendent's office, you can go online, and we can really use your help. So that's just a little plug for becoming a substitute for us. I think that the joy you get back will really become yours and certainly become ours. So Susan, you're on.
Okay, great. Do I have to put any button or anything? Or can you hear me? Okay. So Mary Ann asked me to discuss a little bit of the level of school impact and the data that we collect. The nursing team collects data on the three criteria. First, starting with transmission within the school facilities and districts. Since the start of school, the district has consistently remained at a low-impact level as far as transmission within the school's facility. As of today, the district has had five reported positive cases, but with no identified transmission or any clusters within the school related to any of those cases as of this date. So that was excellent news, and we have a lot of information on that. We collect data daily on the number of students who have tested negative for COVID-19 since the start of school. And as of Friday, those numbers are compiled every Friday, we've had 608 negative tests since the start of school. We have had to quarantine for close-contact exposures on 95 individuals. Some of those were home, close-contact exposures, some were quarantined related to a positive case within the school. But of those quarantined, there's been no identified, again, in-school transmission. We also collect data on the parents or guardians who have opted not to get the COVID-19 test. And instead, they choose the 10-day out, the 10-day isolation if they have symptoms. Remember, children are not coming to school or being sent home from school with even a mild singular symptom. And that's by the guidelines of the state. It's a very protective guideline, and children can have very mild and even singular new or unexplained symptoms that can't be explained from something else. So we had about 50 parents that chose to do the 10-day isolation. But that has really, really trickled off because testing in the area has really, really improved. Access to testing has improved for families. So those are the things. So again, you know, we have had sporadic cases, but no evidence of transmission within the school system. As far as student absenteeism, that's something else we look at daily. We look at it for each individual school and then as a district-wide. The district has consistently maintained an absentee rate less than 10%. And, you know, it's considered low if it's less than 15%. Most recently, last week, in the beginning of this week, we're running at about a 6% to mid-7% absentee rate. And this is very typical for this time of year, even on a normal year. We review those rates daily. We report them to the SAU. And we also, the nurses, report them in the state reporting system to DHHS, our absentee numbers, so that they would pick up potentially a bump in numbers or an increase. So those are sent in individually from each school. So when we're looking at school impact, transmission within the facility is low, absenteeism is low. And then the last thing is the staff capacity, which Mary Ann just alluded to. That's followed mostly by administration and human resources as far as the staffing goes. But there's a lot of discussion between us about, you know, what's safe. And like Mary Ann said, some of the things we can't do now, we can't have teachers cover one class if it's cohorted and things like that. So in summary of that little part, the school impact, the level of school impact remains low. And we monitor that daily. I will be back up.
I want to take time to acknowledge Sue and the nursing team's work. I've acknowledged that in my weekly messages. But over and above, really without our nursing team and Susan's leadership, we really wouldn't be where we are in the Derry Cooperative School District. So I understand that the board knows that. I understand our leadership team knows that. And the board is so appreciative, and I know our leadership team is too. Yet, I want the general public to know that. I'm sure you know it as families. Yet, it is always nice to be able to publicly recognize them as a nursing team. And Sue is not only part of the team, but the nursing team leader. So Sue, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your leadership, your time, your commitment, and your love for children. Dr. Peterson, see if you can match that one. I think you can.
Hello, everyone. Thank you again for having me and thank you for listening to my counsel. Tonight's mask joke is that you don't have to smell my shrimp scampi that I had for supper tonight. 11? Nope, it's me. Could you put it up here? There it is. All right. So the decision matrix was a blessing, and it came out September 1st. And it was based on data that we had obviously accumulated, the state had accumulated up until that point. And it looks at the different aspects that Mary Ann has kind of looked at already as far as the community transmission, as well as the school impact and the information that comes through those. And I can tell you, and it's been said already tonight, that our team looks at this information on a very regular basis. I kid you not when, or Mary Ann was not kidding when she said that it's six to seven times a week. Texts are going back and forth. I texted both Mary Ann and Susan when I saw that we went from moderate to substantial over the weekend. And then we thankfully came back down, but now we pop back up. And those numbers, it's right on the border, right? So it's going to continue to flex probably between the two of those. So DHHS was kind of tasked with, they came out with their guidelines on September 1st. And they used the numbers that they had had before that time period, obviously. If we remember back to that time, there wasn't a lot of testing going on. The folks that were getting tested were folks that were sick. We didn't have the numbers, the volume of testing. And when they came up with their matrix, they looked at a triple-square numbers. So 25, 50, 50 to 100, greater than 100. And there was no epidemiologic wisdom behind that. Literally, they were looking at what numbers they had coming into it and what seemed to be appropriate. September 15th, CDC came out with guidelines, and their top number was 200, which, two weeks later, they're coming up with double the number that our DHHS came up with. And our DHHS has been on the prudent side of things, on the conservative side of naming things. So as we look at this matrix, and we realize that there are those three pieces to the matrix from a community standpoint, I mean, the school data Suzanne has nailed down. And we're not seeing transmission within the schools, and our absentee rate is about what we would expect seasonally. So as we look at the community level, the two other criteria that are there, the PCR in seven days is less than 5. It's at 2.1, I want to say, tonight. And our hospitalization rate, Parkland has two cases currently in their hospital. So those numbers are still very, very low, which says that community spread is very low. DHHS's task was to come up with a number that would imply that the pressures from the community would start affecting schools. And again, there's no epidemiologic basis for that. And so at this point, I think we have two of three of the criteria that are still well below the numbers that they were looking at when they were looking at this before we got to here, obviously. Back in early, mid-August to early, through the middle of the summer essentially, as they were looking through this, getting it prepared for September 1st. So now we're at a place where our community continues to do a very good job. Our school community is safe. We're not seeing transmission within the schools. And our overarching, my overarching goal is here to have the four walls of the school to be a safe place for our students and our teachers and our staff. And for those four walls not to be a place where transmission is happening. We don't want, obviously, our schools to be a breeding ground for COVID. And we're not seeing that as data. I think that's all I have.
Do you want Slide 12 projected?
Oh, sure. Thank you. That'd be great. I forgot about Slide 12.
It's okay.
So I think I alluded to this. This is the matrix. And if we look at it, we can see that once we get to a level of community transmission moves from moderate to substantial, that that would then push us over into that hybrid model. But again, I would suggest that two of those, of the three criteria, we are not into a substantial range. And I think that it's remaining, that we can safely remain in in-person instruction.
Again, Dr. Peterson, we so appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
You work all day.
And I can come back up at the end of the presentation and take any questions that folks have.
And then you have your other commitments besides family, and then you're always available to us, nonstop. So again, not only your commitment to our pre-K through 8, as well as Pinkerton Academy, but to our entire community and the greater community beyond us. And, you know, just your diligence and us. And, you know, your, just your diligence and your passion, and really your commitment to keeping everyone safe. And just always being there for everyone is more than appreciated. We are more than grateful.
You're very welcome.
And your expertise goes without saying.
My mother paying you, Mary Ann, by any means?
No, not yet. Not yet.
Thank you.
Only law. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Susan Lenehan's going to come back up and return to us for slide 13. Now, you just owe me after that.
So, yeah, one more thing we wanted to point out is that our mitigation strategies that we put into place, you know, we clearly hoped that we'd never see a positive COVID case in school, but we knew that that was unlikely. But it is, the mitigation strategies we put into place, the consistent use and correct use of masks has been very, very key. And I have to say, I think back in whenever it was, June or July, in my head, I was like, if we think kids are going to wear masks all day, you know, it is absolutely astounding how well the kids do with masks. It overwhelms me every day when I walk up and down those halls and see the kids and not complain and running around on recess with masks. So, that mitigation strategy was excellent. The social distancing and specifically the cohorting, to the largest extent possible, has worked and worked well, especially when we've had to contact face. It's worked remarkably well. Hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, the kids are, you know, they really, they've taken the example of the adults. You know, you rarely see a kid come in or out of a room without hitting the hand sanitizer or singing the, you know, ABC song lightly when they're washing their hands. The teachers have done an amazing job in ingraining that into the students. Of course, our custodial crews and the cleaning and disinfection, they're constantly on the move throughout the day, and the extra help we have throughout the day is added to our lack of transmission in school. And the contact tracing and the planning we made with DHHS and the learning we did over the summer and into the fall in collaboration with the DHHS, it's really gone as well as we could expect it to do. You know, when there is a report of a positive case, we immediately, the team comes together and we look at the time period that the child was in school or the adult was in school, whichever it may have been, and we move from there. And I have to say, you know, the most heartwarming thing is when we have to make those calls and the response of the parents is, oh, my child is going to be so disappointed. He has to be quarantined for 14 days. Or when you make the follow-up calls and they say, he's, she's so excited that there's only seven more days before she can come back to school. And, you know, so the gratitude that we have gotten from parents, where you expect that they, we might not get that response when these pop up, I just want you to know as a board that that's, you know, the vast majority of what we've been hearing is, thank you for doing what we do to, you know, keep the kids safe. We'll be here after to answer any question. I don't know if there's any more slides after this, Mary Ann? Yeah. So, Dr. Peterson and I will be available if anybody has any questions. But thank you for your support on that, and we'll continue to keep our schools safe and the kids there as long as possible.
Thank you, Sue. Those stories are heartwarming, too, the, about the calls and the response you get. So, I added Phase 4 in. I think it's really important for everyone who is listening and even who listens later, or just hopefully reads this and synthesizes the information, takes us to heart. It's about collaboration, communication, and decision-making. And I'll give you a primary example that, when I put this together, I hadn't had this conversation yet. But it came a result, as a result of something that happened today. And the collaboration is really important, those relationships that you build. And Susan mentioned contact tracing and mentioned New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, New Hampshire DHHS. And it really is a result of those relationships that you foster with people that you work with that make the difference. If you have certain contacts, you know, with whom you work, and you can foster and make positive relationships, and your team makes really good impressions, not because of who you are, but because of what you do. And you earn the respect that you deserve. And I firmly believe that the Dairy Cooperative School District has done that with the New Hampshire DHHS, and we also give that respect in return. And I was told that today. I've been told that in other calls, but I was more poignantly told that today. And I believe the public needs to know that, that we've had good luck, because it's a two-way street. New Hampshire DHHS is extremely busy. Yet, you know, they deserve a lot of respect and a lot of gratitude. And I think it goes a long way that people receive compliments when they need them. And at the same time, our work is verified, and the good work that our professionals, the great work that our professionals are doing is really important to be recognized here this evening and recognized on a continuous basis. I also believe that's how improvements are made and great work is carried on. So, I want to take the time tonight just to kind of go off on this, on a tangent on this slide. I put it together because I really believe this is important, and this is how good things happen and good becomes great. So, I don't really need to go on much more. We do continuously collaborate with one another, with our task force members and with DHHS, and whomever we need to collaborate with to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And we're going through the right processes. We have school district data reviews. I've already mentioned that. We review our town, our county and state-level data, which I've already mentioned that prior in the very beginning of the presentation this evening. We work essentially, our essential work is really, really important with our community leaders task force. I know at any time, I can call any of those community leaders, and they will meet on a Sunday if we need to via Zoom. And we've done that in our pandemic response team, which I've already mentioned. And then we'll make a decision. Do we transition between instructional models, or do we stay where we are? I said in Friday's message, we intend to stay where we are at this time. We watch our data every day. We collaborate every day. But our intention is to stay where we are at this time, as long as students and staff are in a safe place. And Dr. Peterson and Susan, you reiterated that tonight, and as long as we're safe. So, fluidity is the key. It's the critical component in Phase 4 and our ability to continuously self-examine ourselves, the data, and trends. So, in conclusion, I believe our current mitigation strategies continue to be effective, and you know what our strategies include. Our social distancing, our, Susan already alluded to, our mask and face covering success, and we can't get complacent. We know that. Complacency, you know, leads to negative behaviors. It need, it would lead to some negative things in our district, and so we don't want to get complacent. We want to keep the positive going, and I believe that's what we're doing. Hand hygiene, cleaning and disinfecting our schools and buses, and our staff daily health assessment, as well as our parental guardian daily home health screening and contact tracing. So, our parental guardian daily home health screening has been very successful, as I mentioned in the beginning. And our contact tracing has been very, very successful so far. The new COVID-19 cases in Rockingham County, as I said, have increased. I said that in Friday's message. We continue to be very vigilant and watch those very, very carefully. And we do have a very protective stance. You've heard that word, that phrase over and over again. You'll continue to hear it with that protective stance. We really are protecting not only students and staff, and our entire community, our learning community and our community at large, to really minimize the impact of COVID-19. And our school district continues to prepare for the potential shift to either a short or long-term transition to remote instruction. To define a short-term shift, that would include a classroom, a grade level, a team-based, a building level, or district-wide. Transitions are never certain. However, contingency plans are necessary for preparation, such is the reason, as I reiterated Friday in my message as well. That's the reason I sent out a letter about a week and a half ago to parents, saying that plans are necessary, because I didn't want to make a statement that in two days from whenever that decision was necessary, that we would be shifting to remote learning for a short-term or a longer-term basis. And I'm not saying that is what is going to happen, but I didn't want to give parents a two-day notice. I wanted to give parents much advanced notice that this could be a potential shift at some time. Again, our intention is to stay, to remain in Plan A for as long as it is safe for students and staff. So, I think that that third conclusion is really, really important. And I hope that everyone understands that it is, again, it's not our intention, but we all have to be prepared for a shift at some time, either a short or a long term. And it's really, really hard and difficult to predict. I think, I think everyone understands that. I believe that everybody understands that. But I thought it was my responsibility to make sure that that was articulated. So, I invite Susan and Dr. Peterson back up, or you can stay there, whatever you choose. And does anyone have any questions?
person that is giving so much time and energy to our plan and to keep people safe, because it's a lot of people working together, and it says a whole lot about our community. So, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson, Ms. Lenehan. You guys are doing an amazing job, and we appreciate you taking your evenings to visit with us and give us the most up-to-date information, evidence-based at least. So, thank you very much for your time. And, you know, I completely share the sentiment from Brenda, how much work is going on behind the scenes to keep our staff and our children safe and keep them in the schools, and just hope that the community continues to do an amazing job. Between 70% and 75% of our town's parents want their kids in the schools, and I'd hate to see that lost with all the effort behind this to an increase in case count. So, let's, let's keep, keep the fight going and keep them in school. Thank you very much. May anyone in the public like to speak?
Dave Levek, DEA First Vice President. I just had a question, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure who can answer it. I would hope Dr. Peterson can. As we look at the map of the state-reported cases in schools, like, we found that there's a significant lag time on cases getting onto the schools portion of the state site. I don't know who, how that's attributed, or who monitors that, or how that is determined. The other thing is, are there different types of tests that show up on the site? So, we have found, and I just heard Ms. Lenehan mention that, I believe, five, without getting into specifics. I look at the map, and I think Dairy, aside from Pinkerton, shows up as three. And so, aside from maybe any new cases, but again, are there any tests that prevent kids from being on there? And I've also found that in the town I live in, so it's a question for myself in my own town as well.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I can't certainly speak to what DHHS, how their kind of process of taking data. I would agree that one of the frustrations that I think we're all feeling is, you know, numbers, and I see this number, but I hear this number. So, I don't disagree with that, that there sometimes is either a lag or the state is using definitions that we're not, we're not privy to necessarily. So, when we think about testing, there's two kind of, two different tests that are available. One is a PCR, which truly looks at the DNA of whatever germ it is that you're looking for. That's the gold standard. But we also have these tests called ELISA tests, which are looking more at antibodies. And we have to report all of our positives, all of our negatives as well. Currently, and there may be a shift to this in the near future, but currently the DHHS is saying that you don't need to necessarily have a PCR test if you have an ELISA test, and it lines up clinically with what you're seeing. So, and I think one of the, one of the hassles, one of the hard parts about medicine is the uncertainty of it. I think as, as consumers of medicine, you want a certain answer. You want to go to your doctor, to your provider, and you want to hear a yes or a no. And a bunch of what medicine is and what the DHHS is dealing with is uncertainty, and not being able to say, this is exactly what it is. And so, I think, I think because the system is big, I think because there are so many moving gears that there are oftentimes lags of numbers, I know that there, I have had that frustration voiced to me at many levels throughout our community. Having said that, because of who we have at the plate and in our team, you know, before this meeting, I texted the CEO of Parkland and said, John, how many cases do we have at Parkland? Two. I can tell you that number is 100%, unless there was an admission in the last two hours. And so, I think what we're dealing with here at a local level is Chuck looking at the Dairy numbers specifically. We're looking at our school numbers specifically, and we have the ability to look kind of from a community standpoint, as well as at a DHHS level. Mary Ann has her contacts at DHHS, which are different than my contacts at DHHS, and I can tell you that they are saying the same things back to us on a general level. So, I think I missed part of your question, or was that, is that it? Yeah, okay.
I appreciate it.
Yep, no sweat.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We'll move on to the next agenda item, roadmap to reopening schools update.
Thank you, Sue and Chris, for the, thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Before I get to the roadmap, I have a few reminders about the end of trimester one and the beginning of trimester two. The last day of trimester one is Monday, November 23rd, and that will be a fully remote learning day for all students, and teachers and staff. The following day, Tuesday, November 24th, is a no-school day. The following day, Tuesday, November 24th, is a no-school day for students, so teachers will be available for parent guardian conferences, and those will be 100% remote this year, as you probably are aware. During those two days and including a half-day on Wednesday, November 25th, the maintenance and custodian staff will conduct a deep cleaning of all district buildings. Trimester two will begin on the Monday after Thanksgiving, which is November 30th. In preparation for the beginning of trimester two, a survey will be sent this coming Monday, November 2nd, to just the families of current students in the Alternative Remote Learning Plan. The survey will be asking those families if they would like to move their child or children to in-person, face-to-face instruction physically in the schools, or if they prefer to remain remote. As of now, unless a family secures a doctor note, we are no longer looking to move students into the Alternative Remote Learning Plan, which may begin to phase out depending on the survey results. As I previously mentioned at a school board meeting in September, all of the long-term substitutes currently in the Alternative Remote Learning Plan will be released from service if and when the district transitions to Plan C, fully remote instruction. At that time, all students will return to their home school. The survey is due back no later than Monday, November 9th, at 4:00 PM. So we can begin any necessary reorganization to the Alternative Remote Learning Plan and/or the in-person, face-to-face instruction occurring in the buildings. Does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. So now I have some updates to the roadmap for reopening schools. And I will just refer to the pages where there have been updates. First page is 15. Up at the top, we changed Cohort A and Cohort B, it's the third bullet, to Group 1 and Group 2. The middle schools are already using those terms, Cohort A and Cohort B, so we didn't want confusion there. So if we go hybrid, it will be Group 1 and Group 2. And we added a bullet, high-needs students will be prioritized for additional in-person learning when possible. And Mary Ann mentioned this when she talked about both hybrid and, Plan B and Plan C. Some students may need to be in-person more frequently. Next is page 27. Second section up at the top, the last, third to last and second to last bullets. What I just mentioned on page 15 is repeated here. High-needs students will be prioritized for additional in-person, in-person learning when possible, and accommodations for students who may need full-time remote learning will be considered, mainly for medical issues. And down the bottom in the middle, we, we added the alternative schedule. This was something that was discussed with administration, and then each school administrator added a teacher from their school. And the students, as I said, designated as Group 1 or Group 2. Group 1 attends in-person Monday and Thursday, and they are remote Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. Group 2 attends in-person Tuesday and Friday, and they are remote Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The Wednesday all-remote day is district-wide, and all students will be able to be together within their classrooms remotely. And later on, I will show the sample schedule at the end of this. Page 28. A simple fourth bullet, middle schools may choose to continue block scheduling. We just replaced the word implement because it's already been implemented. Page 31. Up at the top, we deleted any indication of an Alternative Remote Learning Plan or any other temporary learning plan, because once we go long-term, Plan B or Plan C, we will be dissolving that program. And down in the last section, it used to say instructional planning. It's now called the instructional plan, and it was, we revamped this entire section to reflect the recently updated instructional expectations. Page 32. Simply changed some titles for family and students. Family connection, it was just families, and we wanted to emphasize that word connections. We're trying to make sure that we keep all students connected to their home school. And it was students, and it is now student support, because we wanted to emphasize the support that is, has been given to students. And down in the last bullet, provide alternative assignments when necessary. We replaced equity through an alternative instructional plan, because as I said, we're removing any information about an alternative plan. Page 33. We added the communication and the instructional plan section. Both sections provide, provided here to reflect the current Alternative Remote Learning Plan and to provide clarity and specificity of what will happen when we move, if and when we move to Plan C. And page 49, which is Appendix F, mentioned before, this is that schedule, to provide the most consistency for families. We heard this as a very important feature for families. For instance, on, Group 1 is on Monday and Thursday. On that holiday, everybody has that day off. They will just not make up that in-person day, because we want to make sure that if you're in Group 2, you know that you are always in on Tuesday and Friday, unless there is a holiday. Group 1, you are always in on Monday and Thursday, and then you know the three days that you are remote, along with the fully remote instruction. When all students can be in class together remotely, there will be extra deep cleaning on that day. And then the two lines at the bottom were added to describe Group 1 and Group 2 again. Anybody have questions on updates to the roadmap?
When you talk about phasing out the ARLP, does that mean that if we go full-remote or hybrid for short-term, long-term, those kids get phased back into their original classrooms? What happens when we go back to in-school? Is that no longer going to be an option?
So, great question. Mac brought up the whether, she mentioned about short-term or long-term. If we have a short-term situation, we will be keeping the Alternative Remote Learning Plan functioning. Kids will stay with their Alternative Remote Learning Plan. Teachers, sort of like Pinkerton, is hoping that, you know, they had these two weeks, and they're hoping that they're going to be able to get back. If something like that occurred, we would, those 700-ish kids in the Alternative Remote Learning Plan would continue doing what they're doing, and then the 75% approximately of the kids and teachers would be doing remote for those couple of weeks, then we would just go back to in. So if we go long-term, and of course, everybody is thinking that somewhere down the line, we're going to go fully remote Plan C for the long-term, through the winter or whatever, if there is an ability, unlike last year, where once we went, we went, and that could very well happen again. If we go fully remote, we could be fully remote for the whole year, depending on what the numbers do, as Mac explained in her segment. If the numbers, you know, maybe we get a vaccine, wouldn't that be fantastic? And the numbers get better, then we may transition to hybrid, and possibly even to face-to-face. There was one part in the roadmap here where we talked about, there may still be, depending on how it all works out, maybe there are some medical issues. We would not be looking to offer voluntary remote learning at that point. We would expect everybody to move into Plan B hybrid or Plan A face-to-face, except for specific cases that medically, we're told that they cannot. And that's something we will be working on preparing for. But yeah, if we go long-term, because all of those long-term subs will be released, and we hope that many of them will continue to substitute for us, that will help with what Mary Ann asked for, with, with substitutes and so forth. But, you know, there's a good chance they will secure other positions and so forth, rightfully so. So we would not be, once we go long-term B or C, then the Alternative Remote Learning Plan will be discontinued.
I have one other comment on, we switched the language in this to family connection to emphasize that there should be a connection with these kids. In your ARLP program, have you emphasized that these classrooms, these children will be phased into, should be in communication or connecting with those kids right now in the case that they do, or when they will phase in here?
One of the things that, that, all of this has developed, as we've learned and made our mistakes and corrected our mistakes, or things came up that we weren't expecting, and we dealt with those. One of the things that's been happening now is, is a transition piece. When we had kids moving back and forth, there was some confusion. So now, teams at the school will get together with our remote team and talk about a kid that's coming from the school and going to remote, or vice versa. If we have a, a student that's going from remote and going to start face-to-face, then those two teams will get together, and there'll be some conversation about where the kid's at instructionally and, and attendance-wise and, and so forth. So there's a bit of a transition. And we hope that the numbers won't spike so fast, that we will have that ability. And there's been some talk about maybe having a little bit of time for those remote teachers, especially the long-term substitutes who may no longer be available to us, to help with the transition back to the home school.
I think that I would just suggest really putting this out there to those families who are affected by this, because I'm getting feedback that even though it was in the plan and it was stated that they'd go back to the home schools, a lot of families aren't aware of this, and have been asking questions of what's happening to their teacher. Also, what is happening to the kids in school who were shifted from a teacher that went remote and were shifted to another teacher? Are those students who have been with their new in-school going to be shifted back to who they were supposed to be originally?
The reason we are looking for right now, even though we're hoping, I'll be saying later on, that the hope is that we can, you know, we can get through trimester one, at least. That would be a phenomenal goal that I hope happens. But we are, we are going to be sending out a survey. I'll be, I'll be, well, what's the difference if I say it now anyways? So if I repeat myself, and when I get to that point, I'll try to remember to move on. But surveys going out next Monday, and that survey will go specifically to families of the Alternative Remote Learning Plan students only, because we're only looking to find out who may be interested in moving their child or children from remote, as, I just said it in my opening thing, now that I remember that. Who will be removing from, who would want to go from remote to face-to-face? We are not asking about who would want to go now for trimester two from face-to-face to remote, because we do expect to be phasing that out. We are asking for these surveys to be done by November 9th at 4:00, so we have some time to look at whether or not we need to, if a lot of people come back, we might need to pull some of our remote teachers who are not there for medical reasons back into the school system. The same thing will happen when we transition. The reason I didn't say that they will be going back specifically to their teacher that they would have had, they would have had at the beginning of the school year or the team, is just for that reason. I've talked to some principals already about their grade level, has already talked, and they, they have less than the school board number of maximum for class size. And the thought process is, whenever possible, they'll keep those kids, the remote teacher that is a full-time employee that works in the schools, will keep the kids that they have. But then in other situations, it won't work out, because a particular school, you know, we have three teachers and five elementary schools, so there's a couple of schools that don't have a teacher in that particular grade. So those kids would have to be moved. And if there's a situation where they're going to go over the maximum, we would want to spread some kids out. But for the most part, the kids that are in most likely will be able to stay with the teacher that they're in with currently. But we will have to look at every school and every grade level and every classroom individually once we get all that data back on the 9th.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Austin, are we measuring parent engagement in the remote environment?
Can you explain that a little bit more?
Certainly. I heard from a parent the other day about the middle school principals offered to have conferences with parents of remote students by grade, and the attendance at those conferences, at least this particular one, was quite low. So I was wondering if we were having discussions as a district about making sure to reach out to the, the parents of those kids to make, or somehow making sure the kids are getting what they need. So I was talking to an eighth-grade parent at this school, who said it was the remote meeting for eighth-grade parents, and she was one of four parents. And I know there's more than four parents. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're checking in with different, with parents and teachers and principals to make sure that if parents aren't checking in at those meetings, are the students getting the support they need?
Right. And I would say that many of the teach, especially in the remote environment, we went from a situation where this state's legislature said no videotaping in the classrooms, to a situation where we often have a parent whose half their face is in the screen, sitting next to their student. So it, I think many of those parents are better informed about what's going on in their student's classroom than ever before, because if they are there in that home, and if they are the one that is supervising that child, they are seeing 24/7 what's going on in that classroom. So that, that may be part of the reason that some of these parents are feeling pretty. I know that the remote teachers are reaching out extensively, not only to the students, but to the parents, and also in that And also, in that supportive role, if a student maybe isn't participating fully, if a student isn't staying on Zoom for the entire amount of time, those type of things, it's been something that I've been dealing with, because it gets to my level once they exhaust all of their options with the parents. So I'd like to think that these parents are more informed about what's going on with their students' education than parents have ever been in the past, so that could be part of it. But I do feel comfortable that not only the remote teachers, but each of the schools and the administration at each of the schools, it is a priority to make sure they reach out and try to make those connections.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any further board comment? Any public comment?
Meg Morseberry, 12 Kendalpon Road, Derry. This is a parent right here, discontinuing remote. I can't even. I have a kid who can't go back. And I usually don't get emotional, but I got to tell you right now, I got a knot in my chest. And I know I represent the teachers in this district, but my first and foremost responsibility is to the child that I'm raising. And for this to be dropped, like, it's a commodity. We're just going to discontinue the alternate learning plan because we need to get kids back into school. She's not going back to school. There's no way she can go back to school until we have a virus that's safe. And the thought of this is making me crazy. And I apologize for being in tears, but this is not something that as a parent I can deal with. When we signed those papers saying that she was going to be remote, she was going to be remote for the year. Not until some magical number or some budget crisis hit or something decided that we're all going to be hybrid. And I'm not even speaking as the president of the teachers' union. I'm speaking as a parent who feels like I didn't get enough information. And how can I sit here and listen to, "We're just going to discontinue it, and she's going to have to go back to school full-time." Either hybrid or in-class all the time. She can't do that. She won't do it. I won't make her do it. This is an issue of when we sign those, when we put the checklist on, penned to the paper in July, we were committing to remote. We weren't committing to anything else but remote. And if you put a hybrid plan in place, she can't go two days a week or three days a week. And as a parent, I am appalled that this wasn't highlighted and clearly delineated when we came up with this in July. I feel like I just got sideswiped. And I know not a lot of parents, like what Jessica said, who were completely and totally upset at the fact that when their kids go back to school, they are not going back to school to the teacher that they've been working remote with. The reason why we wanted kids in school was so they could make connections. Her connections are going to be completely gone because she's going to be with someone else. She's going to be back in school, she's going to be with another teacher who hasn't spent the last two and a half months with her. So I mean, I didn't read the stuff that Austin had until just a few minutes ago, listening to the presentation, as I just don't get it. I'm completely baffled. And as an educator, I'm completely blown away. And as the president of the union, I don't know how we're going to do this. So there's three pieces right here, and I didn't realize this was coming up tonight. And I promised Mary Ann that when I talked with her this afternoon that I didn't have any curveballs, but I guess I did, because I didn't know that this was coming up like this. And I appreciate you listening. I apologize again for getting upset, but this is critical to me.
So I'm going to chalk it up, Meg, to my lack of good communication. If, like your situation, there's a medical issue, we will have a remote option. We will not have a remote option for, "I don't want to send my kid because I don't want him wearing masks. I'm a little nervous," whatever the case might be, the non-medical. But there will be a remote option for every single child, including yours, that has a medical reason for not, and the staff members, because we know we have staff members who have medical situations. We have some that have volunteered to come into the remote because we needed more people to cover the numbers. Those would go back to school. All of the kids who are not in a situation, because again, we're fully remote. So everybody's doing remote. Everybody's back with their home school, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If we move, as Jessica mentioned, maybe sometime in the spring, to a hybrid Plan B, or even, who knows, maybe back to Plan A by May or something, there will still, if there are situations where because of medical issues, kids can't come back, we will have a remote option.
But I don't think it's just a medical issue. You know, there are parents who don't want their kids in school because they don't feel safe. And for me, it's a combination of both. I don't feel safe with her being in a classroom. And then what happens to the size of the classrooms? Right, you know, we're doing really well. I mean, we talk about it all the time, that our classrooms are set up so that kids are at least three and a half to six feet apart. You start putting 24 in a class, and you're back down to less than three feet. And parents have the right not to feel safe putting their kids back in class. Derek brought up that 30% of our parents don't want to return their kids to school. That was what we were working on. And the fact that it's only medical is not, I don't think is fair, Austin. I think it needs to be, again, we went to the, when you asked us if we wanted to choose remote or if we wanted to put our kids back in school, we chose remote because that's what made it work for our families. And that was what was important to us as a family and as a community. I don't feel safe putting my kid, putting Abby in a situation where she's in a classroom with 24 other kids. I don't feel safe with that. She's home. She's safe. I monitor who she's with. And I just feel, I guess my biggest frustration is, I feel blindsided by this plan. I just feel that we made a commitment in July, when you asked us to choose whether we wanted to go remote or in-person, we chose remote. And now we're coming to a point where we've almost finished the first trimester, and somewhere we think we're going to make it. And you know, we may, we might be lucky and make it another trimester. I don't see that happening with winter and flu, but to get rid of a remote learning plan, I just think is the wrong thing to do at this point. And I know it's got, I know it has a fiscal piece to it, but the commitment we made to parents was, if you want your kid remote, your student remote, they can be remote. And I don't think the medical is an only good reason to keep your student out of school. I think families need to make a decision based on what their family is like and what fits their family. And there were some parents who, you know, say, "I'm not going anywhere until there's a virus, until there's a vaccine." So you know, I just don't think it's a medical issue. I think it's more than just that.
Thank you. I think hopefully this is a decision that has to be made way down the road. Obviously, we're not making that decision tonight, and that's not the intent. But to be transparent, to bring these things up now and to get the feedback from parents directly is important. And we certainly appreciate that. So as we move forward, then we'll be, you know, every day we're learning new things. Dr. Peterson brings us new information every time he comes to us. The CDC releases new information. The DHS releases new information. Every week, we learn new things about this virus we're all battling. And hopefully, in a few months or six months or whenever it is, when we have to discuss those options, we will be transparent as we have with the plans in the past. And the plans have changed to adapt to what we've learned. And we've always taken that public feedback very seriously with our decisions. So I appreciate the public. Again, Meg, thank you very much for coming and speaking. And definitely we'll keep that in mind. Okay, Mary Ann, personnel.
I do have one more presentation.
Go ahead.
Dr. Minkel, I believe you have planning for possible transition and instructional models, understanding the hybrid and complete remote models. I believe I sent it in an email. Oh, you got it? Good. Thank you. Okay, I want to thank Lisa Long, District Mathematics Director, and Dr. Sarah Taylor, District Literacy Director, for their input, and Lisa Long for her creation of this presentation. I've never heard of this presentation thing before, but Chris Kellen always does better presentations. I've had to redo them at the request of the school board. Evidently not my forte. So thank you, Lisa, for that. This presentation is for our families. And as always, it will be available on the district website at sauten.org. So we, as a district, are pleased that over 75% of our students have been able to be safely face-to-face in their schools with their peers, teachers, and other staff members for the past two months. We hope this will continue, as I said, through the rest of this trimester, but we do need to be prepared. Currently, we are in Plan A, fully onsite with an Alternative Remote Learning Plan, servicing about 23% of our students. This presentation will explain Plan B, the hybrid model, and Plan C, the complete remote model. I must emphasize that if we move to either Plan B or Plan C for just a few weeks, we will continue to the Alternative Remote Learning Plan. Once we transition to either Plan B or Plan C for the long term, the Alternative Remote Learning Plan will be discontinued for the rest of the school year. Only students, this means that the only students who will be fully remote during Hybrid Plan B will be students with medical notes from a doctor, excusing the child from the in-person portion of the plan. In both Plan B and Plan C, when the Alternative Remote Learning Plan is discontinued, all students will transition back to their home school. We do not expect to move, if we move into Plan C for the long term, we are guessing that it will be through. It could be as long as the entire year. And as we discussed, and as Meg brought up about her particular situation, and others may be feeling somewhat the same way, we will look into those issues if, come the spring or whenever, we do end up phasing back into Plan B or Plan A. Plan B is the hybrid model, which indicates that all of our students will be divided into two groups of approximately half of the students in each classroom and/or team. This will allow for a minimum of six feet between desks at all times with more spaces available in many classrooms. Students will still wear masks with the availability of mask breaks, which will continue to be more frequent for our younger students. Groups will be assigned, so families will have their children all remote or in-person on the same days of the week. And we will determine on a case-by-case basis those students who may require more access to in-person learning. When we designed the schedule, we first looked at what was best for students, added in what allowed our staff to see their students in person within the least amount of remote days, and the ability to provide consistency for our families. If your child is in Group 1, for example, they would always be remote on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, and they would always be in school face-to-face on Monday and Thursday. For Group 2 students, they would always be remote on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and they would always be in school face-to-face on Tuesday and Friday. In the above-scheduled example, there is a no-school day on Monday for a holiday. The fully-remote day on Wednesday allows for all students in each classroom to be together remotely and for the schools to receive a deep cleaning in the middle of the week. With the hybrid model, there will be synchronous learning. This means that the teacher will have live Zoom sessions with the students who are in the class and the students who are remote at the same time. On the fully-remote day, all students will attend the live Zoom sessions remotely as an entire class. Along with the whole-class live Zoom session, students will attend live Zoom small-group sessions when assigned. Students in class and remote will also complete assignments that are posted in the Google Classroom. Plan C is called Fully Remote because all instruction and student learning will occur remotely from home on their computers and Chromebooks. For a very limited number of students, there may be some specialized in-person instruction with extensive safeguards in place to protect everyone. As with the hybrid model, there will no longer be an Alternative Remote Learning Plan. Many of the current students in our Alternative Remote Learning Plan are being successful this fall due to the preparation their family has provided. For instance, a well-lit designated workspace with all of the necessary supplies within reach. Some have included a headset that allows students to eliminate any background noise. Most importantly, encouragement and support from the family of the students learning in the remote environment is key. Thank you to all of the parent guardians and other family members who take the education of their children as seriously as do the members of the Derry Cooperative School District. Questions?
Austin, I just have one quick thing. On a Monday holiday, I, holiday? I assume that the kids just, they only go to school one day that week? They would only have one in-person?
They would only have one. What we, the biggest thing we've heard from families is the consistency piece. Being able to tell their work situation if they have that availability, or their sitter, or whomever. These are the days that Johnny or Mary will be in school. These are the days that Johnny or Mary will be remote. So, because we even had a schedule way back when that we just did Day 1 and Day 2. And if there was a holiday after Day 2, then it was Day 1 after that. And the feedback we got from families was the inconsistency would be difficult to deal with. So yes, in that situation, now, we've had two of the four Monday holidays that happened in the school year already. There's Martin Luther King Jr., if we are in a hybrid schedule in January. If we're a hybrid schedule in May, there's Memorial Day. Of course, there's going to be snow days, no longer blizzard bags. Those will be fully-remote days. But the general consensus was for consistency of the families. They know that it'll be, there's only a couple of days a week that are going to be in school. And they won't change.
I appreciate that. I think that's extremely valuable. You know, is that there's some consistency to what that schedule looks like, particularly for our working parents and people who are going to schedule around those needs. So that makes sense. I'm glad to see that there isn't like a, "Well, okay, we'll cut another day in half." You know, if like, if we're off on the Monday, that's just a lost day. So I'm okay with that.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Thank you, Austin. Personnel?
Okay. Sure you're done, Austin?
I am.
Okay, thank you. All right, and personnel, I just have one item, and I think Derek, you'll probably take it over from here. The school district treasurer position has now become available, and we have a policy regarding that, Policy BCC, EPS Code BCC, which speaks to us about appointed board officials, school district treasurer, clerk, and recording secretary. And at this time, the board may want to decide how they will go about with this vacant school district treasurer position, which has now become available.
Okay, so, unfortunately, our current treasurer has moved out of the district, and that no longer leaves that person eligible. So, we ideally would, as a policy, allows us to appoint an interim while we post to find the permanent position. I believe we have a candidate. So, we would just have to motion to accept that person. We'll get them into starting training, and then the administration will post for the permanent position moving after that.
Do we need a name to make the motion? Or not, just to fill the position temporarily?
I think you may need to nominate or approve somebody, even if it's a temporary position.
I'm just asking if we need the name before I make the motion. I just want to make sure the motion's correct. So, do we need a motion for the position, the temporary position? Do we need a motion that includes someone's name?
I think you should include somebody's name.
Okay.
Yep.
Who's our recommendation?
Jane, you have those names?
Chantel Boyle would be the interim.
So, I'll make a motion to appoint Chantel Boyle as the temporary assistant -- or temporary treasurer for the district.
I'll second that. Thank you, Brenda, thank you, Meg. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Thanks to her for filling in for us.
Thank you very much.
Okay, policy.
Someone made a suggestion at the last school board meeting about doing
I got it.
a number of these policies together. I don't know if you want to do that. I have --
That's what I'm doing. I'm just going to put -- I'm just going to read them off for a second reading.
Second. Okay.
Unless everyone wants to stay, and we'll read each one through. I didn't think so. Okay. Try to add some levity to the evening. All right. So, to the board, I would like to bring the following policies forward for a second read, and I will begin with IJNDB, Digital Literacy and Technology Integration, JLC, Student Health Services, JLCD, Administering Medication to Students, JLCDR, Procedures for Administering Medication to Students, JLCE/EBBC, First Aid and Emergency Medical Care, IHAM, Health Education and Exemption from Instruction, EHAC, Electronic Digital Records and Signature, GBAA, Sexual Discrimination, Harassment, and Violence Employees, GBAA Exhibit, Sexual Harassment Complaint Report Form, and JBAA, Sexual Discrimination, Harassment, and Violence Students.
I'll make a motion to approve the above-stated 10 policies.
Motion by Nick.
Second.
Second by Brenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There is one other under K, Anti-Discrimination Plan. That was not brought forward as a second reading. That was gone over last time and reviewed by me. You don't need that brought forward as a second reading. That was part of an embedded plan within the last policy, so that really didn't need to be on the agenda. I just wanted to make sure you knew that you didn't need to -- I didn't need to bring that forward as a second reading, so it doesn't need a motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Superintendent update?
Austin took some of mine, so forgive the repetition. That's okay. You're forgiven. I really just wanted to begin by reminding families of some very important information regarding the upcoming schedule of really important November dates. One is no school for students, and you've heard this numerous times. On Tuesday, November 3rd, for the general election, this will be a virtual staff workshop day, and will be used for a deep cleaning for our school facilities. So, thank you in advance to our custodial maintenance staff for their job well done each and every day. School will not be in session on Wednesday, November 11th, in honor of Veterans Day. On behalf of the student staff and each of us in the Derry Cooperative School District, thank you to all veterans for your service and dedication to our country. Please accept our heartfelt appreciation, respect, and gratitude for all that you've done, who you are, and what you continue to do. Monday, November 23rd will be a remote learning day, as Austin already alluded to, for all students, and that includes students who attend school onsite. Tuesday, November 24th is a family teacher conference day. Conferences, as Austin alluded to as well, will be held remotely, and both of these days will be used to do a deep cleaning of our school facilities. So, you notice some deep cleanings are coming up as well. Another part of our really restrictive and proactive stance, as I call it. From Wednesday, November 25th through Friday, November 27th, there will be no school in observance of the Thanksgiving recess. Thus, for the entire week of November 23rd, there'll be no students or staff in our schools with the exception of required staff who need to be in our school facilities during that time. Kind of in alignment with this, I just want to remind families, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Public Health Services, seems to be all I talk about lately, but I do want to remind families, on August 27th issued a travel and quarantine guidance and employer screening and exclusion criteria. So, really, in essence, that spoke to what happens when anyone is out of -- and travels outside of New England. So, if anyone travels outside of New England, which includes a private vehicle, as of today, and I stress as of today, and I'll tell you why in a minute, must be quarantined for 14 days from the last day of travel. So, I ask families to, if you're onsite in Learning Plan A onsite, please contact your child's school as soon as possible. If you plan to travel outside of New England at any of these breaks, so that they will be informed about your child quarantining. Why I stress as of today, that travel guidance is supposed to be updated at any time. It's really imminent that the travel guidance is updated. So, as of today, that is the guideline, the 14-day quarantine. I have read different things, different articles, too. One is recent as last night, that said the CDC is going to change guidelines specific to children. I don't know when and if that travel guide, our travel guidance specific to New Hampshire, which is often, as you heard this evening, more restrictive than the CDC, will be changed. I know that I just heard on Friday at a superintendent's virtual meeting that it is imminent. So, as soon as we find that out, I will make sure that that is shared with our leadership team, who will then share it with parents through their newsletters and on our website. So, please look for that, guidance being shared. But as of now, I do stress the 14 days, because that's the operation under which we proceed at this time. We continue to be most grateful to our staff, students, and families for really being diligent in taking the health precautions that are necessary to maintain the safest learning environment possible for all students and staff, and ultimately, the community at large. So, thank you to each and every one of you. That is with the most heartfelt gratitude that I can extend on behalf of all of us. Speaking of the holidays, the Derry Community Fund is assisting families again this year with Thanksgiving food, as well as holiday gifts. Our Derry schools are collecting non-perishable Thanksgiving food items and foods like cereal, juices, and snacks for families in need. Food will be distributed at Thanksgiving food pickup locations on November 13th and 14th. This year, the location has changed to the Alexander Carr Park, which is a new location, as I said, this year. Remax Innovative Properties and the Pinkerton Academy Interact Club are hosting a winter coat drive for our Derry families. The Derry Cooperative School District homeschool liaisons, Alicia Triplet and Lee Holder are working with Suzanne Ochoa at Remax to help organize this coat drive. So, new coats ranging in age, ranging from sizes 2 through adult sizes, are currently being collected at locations such as the Derry Public Library, Marion Garrish Center, and Remax and London Derry. I really want to thank in advance to all those who are so generous with their donations of food, coats, and their time. Time is precious. We understand that. That is indeed a precious resource for all of us. So, thank you to anyone who has been so generous, or continues to be so generous with our community, be it with our students and adults. So, again, thank you. We have the utmost gratitude to each and every one of you. And in ending my thanks for this evening, at least now, special thanks to the students, administrators, and families for their support for the district's weekly video messages. I hope that you enjoy the messages and find the reflections from our students as inspiring as I do. The continuous support with these messages means a great deal to our learning community and a great deal to me. Just hearing our students, being able to meet some of them in our schools at the threshold of the classroom, being able to say hi to them from the threshold, really means a lot. And seeing them in their virtual learning environments means a lot. So, thank you to their families for their continuous support. Thank you for the pride they take, and thank you for the pride you take in supporting this, and thank you to our administrators, and thank you to our fabulous Mr. Minkel for the time and patience you have in putting together those video messages every week. So, I hope that everyone has a great remainder of the week, and we will see you on Friday with the video message.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Business administrator.
Okay, tonight's presentation is really going to focus on three items. We did put the latest budget, not budget update, I apologize, financial update, it is in your packet. We wanted to include food service. You can see all the information on our free and reduced. And also, I don't know why this is in here, upside down. But if we look at food service, just because the current activity, if you're looking at the revenues, you're going to see that we've only received $1,491 in revenues, and that's really just funds that we received from the prior year, or funds that we received this year prior to them approving the waiver for free meals, and I'll get into that in a minute. So, you're also not seeing the anticipated revenue coming in for the federal reimbursement for all these free meals. So, these will all be updated as soon as we start receiving those federal payments to reimburse for all of the free meals. But we did put our expenses to date in there. We have had quite a few maintenance repairs for the food service department. In fact, we just are, I think we paid a bill tonight, or it's going in the next check run, for all of the repairs that we've had to make to -- we did preventative maintenance this year on all of the equipment, and so there were some issues found with, there was repairs done to ice machines, or repairs done to walk-in coolers, walk-in freezers, the condenser units. So, all of those were taken care of this year for the start of the school year. And as far as the general expenditures or revenue, we just wanted to point out that we did include on our projections the full-day kindergarten aid that we are anticipating receiving. Now, we know that the appropriation wasn't approved at the state level. However, we do anticipate that that will go to the January session, and that we would have that revenue hopefully by springtime. So, I did include that as a potential revenue, and we did include the revenue for the unreserved fund balance that we came to, our actual number was $2,953,516 was the final, and I think that that's our audited number, although we haven't received the audit yet, but we came into an agreement with them. The expenditures and for a general fund, we've obviously been tracking all of our COVID expenses, and we have, I actually had submitted those to the state, so they have seen all of the expenditures that we have to date. The salaries, of course, are ongoing. Other expenses that are ongoing are our cleaning products and our PPE, things of that nature that are going to be included in COVID. And though they are included in here, we're going to start pulling them out since we're going to receive funds for those, and I'm going to actually get into that next. So, if, unless anybody has any questions on those reports, I'd like to go into food service. They did, the state did approve the waiver for us to have free meals for all students from now until the end of the fiscal year, until the end of June 30. I have mentioned this before, that this is open for any student under the age of, I think it's under the age of 19. So, even students who attend Pinkerton Academy can still get their meals through us from now until the end of June 30th, if, you know, it's more convenient for them to get their lunch through us, because they may have a sibling at home that attends our schools, or if there's students who have, you know, younger siblings. These free meals, which include breakfast and lunch, are available to any student in our district. Littles, up until, I believe it's 19, can access our food service program. So, parents can contact any one of our schools, and if pickup times that we have established at the moment don't work at a particular school, they can pick it up at any one of our other schools, or we will make arrangements for another time for parents. And they can get multiple days at a time, so parents don't have to continually come out. Students also do not have to be with the parent when they come to pick up meals. So, if it works best for a family, for one of the parents, guardians, whatever, to come and pick up meals, that's certainly allowable. Last year, when we received the waiver, students in the beginning of the program, as required by the requirements of that program, we had to have students present. We no longer have to do that. And we didn't have to do that at the end of the feeding program as well, when we were doing it last year. So, we encourage parents to do that. The district receives full payment on those meals, which is the federal reimbursement for both breakfast and lunch. So, again, we encourage all families, whether you are a grade preschool through grade eight with us here in the Derry School District, or you're a Pinkerton student, or you're a next student, or you're a homeschool student, or you're doing our remote learning program. Any student in Derry can participate in our program. So, please reach out. You can contact Susan Baroskis. You can either email her, or you can call her if you have further questions, but this is a benefit that we're very fortunate. It is a nationwide benefit. This is not just New Hampshire. We also want to remind parents that although this program does have a waiver for this school year, that it's really important for families to fill out those free and reduced applications. There, the free and reduced numbers are used a lot in our calculations for The free and reduced numbers are used a lot in our calculations for adequate funding. They're also used for our federal funds. And we also want families to continue to fill out those applications in case, for some reason, the USDA is unable to fund the free food program until the end of the fiscal year. We want families to be set up and approved for their applications. But again, I don't want to confuse parents to think that the free food right now is for just those who qualify. It's for anybody, any income level. All students get free food right now. So, but on the other side of that, we do still have outstanding debt for meals that have been purchased for the last several years, and we are going to be sending out letters from our office. Maureen Pearson, who does our collections, has been contacting families last year, this year. It's a continuous process, and families who do have outstanding meal balances, we are always available to make payment plans for those families that need that assistance, and will also remind them about the free meals that they can get at this time. The food service program is also in need of help wanted. I think that she has one or two full-time positions, and then she has at least three to four part-time positions. So, anybody who's interested in working in our food service program, I know that every department in the district is vying for anybody who's available, but if the food service program appeals to you, apply online, or you can fill out an application in our office. I also just wanted to update people on our budget process. We had our first budget meeting already on October 19th, and we're going to have our next budget meeting on November 2nd. We had a lot of really great questions from our fiscal advisory and school board members, and then we've put those into a Google Doc that we're going to share with both of those groups this week, so that you can see all the responses to the questions. And any updated documents will also be sent out prior to Monday night's meeting. We also were able to revise some of our budget numbers because the guaranteed maximum health came in, guaranteed maximum dental came in, property and liability, workman's comp, unemployment. All of those numbers came in after we had already set the original budget. So, those have all been updated, and those will be presented as well on Monday night. But board and committee members will get that this week. Lastly, I just wanted to talk about the additional funding that all districts are going to receive through the supplemental school funding. As you know, we were all allocated funds through CARES Act, and Derry for K, pre-K through eight was allocated, I think we ended up with about $354,000, and at Pinkerton was about $345,000. And I'm the fiscal manager for that project, and I've already worked with Pinkerton on their share of the funds, and they were using theirs towards their Chromebooks for their students to learn remote. Now, we had all anticipated getting additional funds through the FEMA program, and because that was determined to not be allowable or education was not considered an emergency, the additional funding is coming from the pool that the state has, and the governor determined that instead of coming up with a complicated formula, it would be a straight $200 for each student in your district to cover costs that you may have incurred through COVID. So, I actually had a conversation with Caitlin Davis from the Department of Ed last week, late last week at night, and she'd inquired about how to handle the Pinkerton students because Pinkerton is also going to get some allocation for this. And we determined that for all of the students at Pinkerton, now for federal funds, I would be the fiscal agent like we are now, and I would have to pay their bill directly because we can't pay Pinkerton directly for federal funds. These funds are not going to be guided that way, so that we would still receive the funds for Pinkerton, and we will just reimburse them based on expenses that they may have had. So, I just want to talk a little bit about that because actually just tonight, when I was checking my emails, we got the email from Caitlin Davis from DOE with all of the notes of how the supplemental money is going to be distributed. So, if anybody were to look at these documents, they're going to look at Derry and Derry's allocation, which is listed as $960,800. Now, a lot of people would get really excited about that, as would I, but I want to remind you that what we're doing with Pinkerton is, and the state is using October 1 numbers of 2019. The reason for that is that so many districts had homeschool students this year that the state is using last year's number, which is helping all of us to have, get a little bit more money. And what we determined last week with Caitlin and myself as far as Pinkerton, they would take each individual district's high schoolers that they're sending to Pinkerton, and those funds, $200 per student. So, for Auburn, Auburn would receive the $200 for all of their students that they sent to Pinkerton last year, and Derry is going to receive $200 for every student that we sent to Pinkerton last year. So, unlike the CARES Act where the $345,000 was only managed by Derry and went to Pinkerton as a whole, not distributed or split up in any way by sending town students or Derry students, it was all for just the school. This funding is being split up by sending towns. So, while you're going to see that it says Derry is receiving $960,000, I want to remind you that estimated, I was trying to do some quick numbers when I just saw what they put out for our numbers, so I have to kind of go through them, but it's estimated that around $640,000 is going to be for our Derry students, and a little over $300,000 is going to be funds for our high schoolers that will go directly to Pinkerton. So, we will be receiving towards our costs that we've had through COVID, over $600,000 here in the district. So, I just wanted to make that clear. If anybody were to see that document, I don't want people to think that preschool through grade eight is receiving $900,000 of additional funding. Now, to put it into perspective, other districts, if you look at Derry being the third largest, Manchester is estimated to receive $2.6 million, and Nashua is receiving $2.1 million. But again, they have their high schools, so that's all-inclusive for them. And Pinkerton is being divided out amongst all of the surrounding towns. Now, they are going to put out, they actually gave a whole list of what you can spend the funds on, and they're having an informational session on October 30th that I will be joining. It's a Zoom call so that we're able to understand how to submit for the expenses. But just to give you an idea of what they put out tonight, the expencers are going to be covered for any expense incurred between March 1st of 2020 and December 30th of 2020. And they have to be only for expenses that were not previously budgeted prior to March 1st. So, they can't be things that, we went through a budget process last year, and it was for something already included in this 2021 budget. We can't put in for those things. And they have to be expenses that address urgent needs caused by COVID-19. And we also can't receive the funding for anything that we've already received federal funds for. Now, I did encumber funds for my CARES Act. However, we have not done a final submission, so I'm going to have to determine what I want to use the CARES Act funds for and what we're going to apply towards these funds. The CARES Act funds, you have until next year to spend. These funds, you have to spend by December 30th of 2020. So, we may want to use the majority of our expenses for this type of funding and hold off on reimbursements until after, so after January 1 for the CARES Act, because we know we're going to have additional expenses going in from January forward, and that money does not have to be expended right away. So, you also can't use lost revenues to be covered by these funds, and all this documentation has been maintained for five years. And again, these are things that could be used. We had to have additional staffing. Those can be reimbursed. Technology, professional development, any transportation that you might have had to provide, and also PPE, of course, cleaning supplies, things like that. So, anything that you had to use to get your school district through COVID can be used for this type of funding. And again, I'll be doing the informational session on October 30th, and we'll look at which way we're going to do that for our reimbursement. But it's a little less restrictive in the way that you have to apply for it, but the same documentation is going to be applied. So, all of our expenses are documented. We have them all in a Excel spreadsheet, and with expenditures and staffing, we are a little over $900,000 right now. There are additional funds that can be accessed through the state, and that is the discretionary, the discretionary $10 million reserve fund. That reserve fund also can be used for school districts, but they're going to be held for schools that had to spend more than $200 per pupil and have not been reimbursed by other available sources. So, if you want to try to qualify, you have to meet the same requirements that are going to be for the $200 and have not been reimbursed by ESER funds at this point or any other federal sources. So, if we wanted to then apply for money through that $10 million reserve fund, that would have to be a detailed application and done through the grants management system, just like I would have to do for the CARES fund. So, there are additional funds available. Those are going to be a little bit more restrictive in the application process. Does anybody have any questions on the additional funding that we'll be receiving or any of the reports?
This is quite the year of juggling numbers for us.
Yeah.
It's good to see extra money to help with these extra expenses we're seeing, but certainly makes budget season a little more interesting. Obviously, we're looking at greater costs, which hopefully don't run into our reserve fund, but we have to figure out how to, best way to spend this money to make the best use out of it. So, do you think by the next school board meeting, you'll have a good idea of how to piece that puzzle together for us?
Yes, I do. And like I said, I can actually share the document of expenditures for the next board meeting and show the detail of what we've done. And I, in fact, myself, last two Friday nights ago, stayed at the office and went through every single check run that we've issued since March and looked through every single invoice to make sure that I did not miss anything because we obviously want to get reimbursed for anything that we've attributed to CARES Act funds. So, yeah, we'll definitely be able to sort out. And I think the board has to, you know, if the board wants me to apply the current expenditures that we have now towards the $200 and save our CARES Act money a little bit, that's completely up to the board or whether we want to do the $10 million. And I've already notified Peg Bork at Pinkerton last week that they would also be receiving this funding. I'm not sure when they're going to distribute it, but, you know, we'll do whatever to receive additional funds at this point, knowing the large expenses that we've had with staffing, and obviously, we've hired additional custodians to maintain the schools, additional teaching staff, and obviously, cleaning and PPE and curriculum and that sort of thing. So, any area that we can receive reimbursement for that, we'll take advantage of that.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Derek, wait one second.
Linda.
So, I'm going to assume that we're, just by the question that you just asked about what the board wants you to do with money, I'm just going to assume that we're going to manage it the best way for the district to get the biggest bang for whatever funds are there. And if it's the CARES Act money that we, or COVID money that we wait until this other money is spent, then I don't know that we need to make that decision, but you do, right?
Yeah, I feel confident in my ability to be able to do that, so if the board feels they want to make a direction, or if you would like to leave that up to me to do the application like I did for the CARES Act and determine which way is most beneficial financially for the district, I can certainly do that, and then just give you an update at the board meeting.
Yeah, I think just, Pete, walk us through that methodology and just, you know, give us the numbers and where it's going, and, you know, obviously, we're going to need to expend, I think, all of this money before we even be able to apply for any of that $10 million. So, you know, maybe it's kind of hard, I think, to get through all that, but maybe we can. So, yeah, use your expertise. We've asked a lot of you and your department this year, and you've done a great job so far. So, just keep going, walk us through that at the next meeting, and, you know, if you chose a certain direction, maybe just explain that, so then it's also evident to the public as to why we use it, use certain money for certain things and not for other things. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Committees' manifest.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the manifest in an amount of $2,253,418.98, which includes general payroll of $1,131,257.13, and a general expense of $1,122,161.85.
Thank you, Nick.
Second.
Jessica with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Any other committees? I think we had a meeting with Pinkerton, our sending town meeting. Typically, those are, you know, we meet with them and just discuss kind of what's going on at the Pinkerton Academy. We had given them a couple of requests this year, one of which was to, knowing that this budget season was going to be difficult, we asked them to potentially have their tuition rate to us a few weeks earlier. I know other districts also, also sending towns sent in that same request, and that has been denied at this point. We may still get it early, but at the meeting the other night, they were going to continue in the same direction as they've always done. We've also asked them to send, each sending town has trustees that sit on their board that are from those sending towns. They are not elected officials. They're chosen by Pinkerton themselves. We've asked them to send a trustee or more than one trustee to our budget sessions, so they are more inclined to understand our budgeting process. That was also denied by Pinkerton. So, we're trying, and hopefully, we can keep moving forward with Pinkerton in a fashion that helps both sides understand the budgeting process. So, any other feedback from the Pinkerton meeting we had? Thank you. Any other committees? I see none yet. I know Legislative is going to probably get busy here next month, so Chair of our Legislative Committee, Lynn Perkins, will probably be getting together the Joint Legislative Task Force once the elections are over, and we know who will be representing our town next year. Look forward to that, probably in sometime in November. And FYI, we were requested by the town to notify folks about the Reimagine Hood Park At the Town of Derry's website, through the scrolling section they have kind of in the middle of page, you'll see the Hood Park. If you click on that, it takes you to a page. There's an FAQ section. There's images of the park currently. There's some maps. They have a steering committee. There's some maps. They have a steering committee. They have the UNH extension. Any of those gardeners out there that visit that site like myself every weekend that are a part of the steering committee to look at how envisioning Hood Park in the future. Citizens are encouraged to go to that website frequently to check out. They'll be sending out more information as that process gets going. Delegations and individuals? All right, I'm seeing none. Any other business? Nothing already? Our next regular school board meeting will be November 10. Our next budget meeting will be next Monday night. And take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, thank you.